I'd like to call to order the August 29, 2017 session of the Hazel Park City Council. We will have an invocation Pastor Barry David and then the Pledge of Allegiance. Will you please stand?
May we have a moment of silence for the people who have lost so much in this flood Father, our hearts are broken when we see the destruction that the wall of water, the hurricane, has done in Texas. We ask that you would comfort and encourage the people that have lost so much. We thank you for your favor upon our city. We thank you for our city manager and the administration that runs this city on a day-to-day basis. We're grateful for our first responders, our first-rate police department and firefighters and their respective chiefs. We're grateful, Father, for the mayor and the city council, those who dedicate so much of their time to give direction to this city. We're thankful for the progress that's being made on all fronts. We're grateful for all that you're doing for us. For this proceeding tonight, we ask for wisdom beyond knowledge, and in each discussion and decision, may your hand guide us. And we'll give you all the praise for all that you do on our behalf. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice Roll call, please. Here.
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 Counsel, the next item is the approval of the agenda. However, I'd like to make a comment before that and request that you consider, and I know it's out of the ordinary on ordinances, that we have discussion and we vote. I'm asking that because of the interest shown in this particular case, that we have a public discussion between the motion and the vote, and that we allow the public to have one minute apiece to discuss what we have already discussed, if that's your pleasure.
I would like to make a motion to do so.
Support. Motion is made and supported. Discussion on the motion.
That's a great idea.
Be none.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Are we referring to the item under administrative reports?
Yes.
Okay. Could we also just...well, okay, that's all right.
Okay, the motion carries. Now we come to approval of the agenda as amended.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Support.
Motion's made and supported. Discussion on it. Be none. Dissension to the motion? Be none. The motion carries. That brings us to public discussion. We do have people wishing to have public discussion. Well, we are combining public discussion and community...
We'll combine public discussion and community announcements.
So we have Kathleen Hall.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Hall, 1141 East Milton, and I'm here on behalf of St. Justin's St. Mary Magdalene Parishes. We're having our rummage and bake sale in October on the 13th, 14th, and 15th, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Friday and Saturday, and then Sunday's 10 to 1:00. We have special pricing on Sunday, and we also have a raffle drawing that day.
Okay.
So I'll leave some flyers over there.
Very good.
And if you could have it put up on the cable.
Sure. Thank you very much. Amy Aubrey.
Hi, Amy Aubrey, 23051 Powell Avenue.
Alyssa Sullivan, 23313 Hoover Avenue.
So we're here today just to ask you guys first to please vote yes to appoint Rob Zograff to the Hazel Park Arts Council. He's been an outstanding volunteer and supporter of our organization, so he would be a tremendous asset to the Arts Council. Second item is we both wanted to thank everybody who came out and supported the Hazel Park Art Fair. We had over 4,000 people in attendance. We've raised approximately how much money?
Just through your sales and donations there, $4,000.
So we've raised over $4,000. We'll be back soon for a presentation for donations to the Hazel Park Promise Zone, animal control, as well as the district library. So it was a fantastic event. It went splendid, and we look forward to 2018.
Really a good show.
Yes, it was.
Nice job.
Also specifically, we wanted to thank the DPW workers and the police officers that came out and helped make the event such a success. We could not have done it without them, and the council members that were involved as well, and Ed City Manager. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I'd like to comment, too. Last year, the art fair raised money, and it came at a critical time and helped fund heartworm treatment for animals that we did not have any financing for. So every dollar that comes through there is greatly appreciated, and 4K is an amazing amount. You guys did a great job. It was fun.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to comment on that as well. It was, I think, the best art fair that we've ever had. It was extraordinarily well-attended. The weather cooperated. I want to thank the members of the Arts Council who took this project over. You know, Amy and Alyssa, they did a great job of co-chairing, and I want to thank you, Mayor Keaton, and Councilman LaCuro. You both also sit on the Arts Council, and some of the other folks, Linda Yono, Steve Gambard, Mike Pierce, Charlie Risinga, Nina Cairo. I'm missing the young lady who was with you in...
Helena.
Helena Fisher. Helena Fisher. Well, have I missed anyone else? They did a fantastic job, and they did a ton of work for this. So again, great event. Just proved that we can run this on our own and run it, I think, much better. So good job to all involved.
Thank you. We have Kylie Loy.
404 East Woodward Heights Boulevard, Kylie Loy. I just wanted to say I'm here to agree with adding medical marijuana to the city, and I think it's a great idea. There's a lot of opioid epidemic going on right now, and it's helping a lot of people.
Well, thank you. Is there any other public discussion? Public discussion, public discussion. Be none. We will close public discussion. Counsel, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, 1 through 6. What's your pleasure?
So moved, Mayor. Support.
Motion's been made to adopt the consent agenda and supported. Discussion on the motion? Be none. Dissension to the motion? Be none. Motion carries.
Once again, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank the collective bargaining units that the city of Hazel Park works with on a yearly basis. We have extraordinarily good labor relations in Hazel Park, and I just want to thank the clerical union, the Teamsters Union, and the Hazel Park firefighters for working with us so well. I expect to have the other contracts to you next month for ratification.
Thank you. That brings us to administrative reports.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you have before you an ordinance to license medical marijuana facilities in the city of Hazel Park. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. We have discussed this, and a initial proposal for an ordinance has been presented to us. I'd just like to say a few words before we start discussion. Hazel Park or Lansing did not legalize medical marijuana. The citizens of the state of Michigan legalized medical marijuana. The problem is, it was just a, you know, one paragraph thing on a ballot, and then the state got a hold of it. And, you know, I...it's not that I agree with Lansing all the time, but they had a big job in front of them transforming this essentially, oh, yeah, we want medical marijuana, into something workable, and they've been working on it quite some time. They have come out with legislation now that gives us some guidance, and fortunately, it puts in there that each municipality has the authority to bring forth its own legislation that regulates what the voters have okayed. It's still in flux. I just heard on the radio yesterday where there are a number of places that just went ahead and opened up dispensaries and things long before the law was ever, the legislation was ever finalized. And I'm sure you've seen them all over the place. We chose not to do that. We chose to wait till there was more guidance from the state as to what we could and could not do, and so we waited. The legislation came out, and here we are. So keeping that in mind, counsel, where do we go from here? Do you want to make a motion? Do you want to hold the discussion first?
I'd like to, Mayor, just preface this to let everybody know that this is just a licensing ordinance. This is before the council tonight. It is not the zoning ordinance.
There will be a corresponding zoning ordinance that will first go to planning commission for a recommendation and will be brought back. And while we think we've covered all the bases, the state may yet come down with some changes in the regulatory document that they put out that may require us to amend this. So this is very much a work in progress.
And let me add, this is the first vote on an ordinance, and then we go back, and the time between the first vote and the second vote, all the council members, all the administration can look at this, and if there are things that come up, if we find interests that we need to address, we can modify this again. This is not the first and last, the end-all to this piece of local legislation.
And again, for the record, this is medical marijuana. This is not recreational marijuana. This is a...these are medical facilities under the regulation of the state of Michigan.
We got a thing going here, but you just brought to mind, not only do we have the regulation, but the legislation that I talked about, the state has their own regulations. So there's regulations on top of regulations. They have a basic regulation. Each municipality can have its own regulations. So these are our regulations that cannot conflict with the state regulations, but they can exceed and massage them. So for discussion purposes, the chair would entertain a motion to approve on first reading.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
A motion is made?
Support.
And supported. Discussion is to be held.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
One shortcoming that I see in this ordinance is at the retail level or dispensary level. The licensing of the owner of the dispensary is quite stringent, but the employees of the licensee are anyone he chooses or he chooses to hire. My concern is that we might look into or consider a background check, at least for all employees of those licensees of the dispensaries.
How are you going to bring them back every time after they have a license and they hire some kid to sweep the floor or somebody else to take out the trash? You can't keep bringing them back with a background check to check up on them. It's regulated by the state with regard to all the background checks for anybody who has any percentage of interest whatsoever in the business itself. And there's a lot more regulations that the state imposes that you're not even seeing through this ordinance. But to take every employee, including somebody that they're going to have, sweep the parking lot, because they're going to be an employee, it's going to be quite onerous, and I don't know how you're going to keep going back and checking up on this. I mean, there's only so much that you can do to oversee this and understand. The state has made regulations that they have to...they have such minute paperwork that they have to submit to the state constantly. I mean, we could not be more of a parent over this group of people that are going to open these businesses.
I'm sorry, but that's just not satisfactory to me because an employee that ends up working the counter or the cash register could also be selling something out of their wallet, out of their pocket, that is not marijuana and is something that is just very small, and that concerns me greatly.
And if I do a background check and nothing comes up and they do that, I don't know how we're going to do that, other than the police have the authority to go into all of these businesses and check up on them at all times.
Oh, I understand that, but a background check would at least eliminate a good portion of the concern of mine. That's my concern.
Mr. Mayor, for purposes of clarification, would you be looking at the same type of requirements? Theoretically, say we agree to the background check up here, and you guys say this is what we want, and that's what you pass. Would you be looking for the same type of requirements for every employee of the establishment, or would you be looking for less stringent requirements? Just wondering. I mean, would you want...we've got some requirements here. Let me find them.
Well, let me...
No felony, no misdemeanor involving fraud or medical. Let me see if I can find them here.
Is that for the owner or for the employees?
Right, you've got the applicants for licensure. If the applicant has been convicted or released from incarceration for a felony under the laws of this state or any other state within the past 10 years, or been convicted of a controlled substance-related felony within the past 10 years. You also have, within the past five years, the applicant has been convicted of a misdemeanor involving a controlled substance theft, dishonesty, or fraud in any state, or been found responsible for violating a local ordinance in any state involving a controlled substance, dishonesty, theft, or fraud that substantially corresponds to a misdemeanor in that state.
Could you...and I understand you're talking about the bonus that would be placed on us to do all employees, and then I heard Councilman Selman talking about somebody who deals with the public. Would you...would it be satisfactory to say that an employee who deals with the public has to have the same...comes under the same criteria as he just read?
If there were some way to define that in the ordinance, yes.
Can...in between first and second reading, can we go back? We'll take a look at how onerous it would be to do the background checks, but I also want you to think of whether or not you want to...you know, you may want to be slightly less stringent for an employee than you would want an applicant, but remember, there are only, you know, there are only so much that we can do. Do we want to say somebody who's had a, you know, a misdemeanor, you know, seven years ago can't work in this establishment? So I want you to think about if we can even do the background checks, and we'll check that out and give you that research, and then they're going to be responsible for paying for them, because we're not going to pay for them. So think about what type...if we can even do that, think about what type of requirements you want for second reading.
We're also talking about, and Beth made this point, give her credit, that if they violate any of the terms of state law or our ordinance, they lost everything.
That's right.
They lose their license.
And their employees...
That's a lot of money.
Their employees, if their employees violate, they violate it.
Your Honor...
If they're caught.
Well, and if they don't get caught, what do we do anyways?
Your Honor, I think my point was that these licensees, they're going to have a really good interest, Councilmember Selman, in making sure they hire the right employees, because there could be a lot of loss.
And...
I'm having to put a lot of confidence in the screening process for how these licenses are going to be issued, that we're going to select candidates that are going to be community members, and they are going to screen their employees very vigilantly.
And also remember that there's a security plan in here, and one of the things in the security plan we're going to require is that everything's going to have to be camera. So you're going to be conducting these transactions in a camera environment. Okay. And if we catch you, we'll prosecute you. We will, you know, do whatever we need to do to see that you spend some time behind bars. But I will research for you the legality and difficulty of doing the background checks, but I also want you to think about what you want those requirements to be.
I just think that the background check isn't going to prevent it as well as the owners, because they have everything to lose, as Councilmember Holland just stated. Anytime that they do anything that's in violation of the ordinance or state law, they've lost millions they put into this.
Yeah, and again, they may, if they're smart, they may want to come to us and get permission and ask us to run background checks on them to better protect themselves. But remember, they could be victims themselves, too, of dishonesty. So we can't punish somebody who's a victim. So I think it's in everybody's best interest to hire the best applicants possible for these positions.
Councilman LaCuro.
Yeah, it's...I wouldn't support this. It seems like an onerous idea, something onerous to put onto the businesses and treating them as if they are guilty before charged. And everything will be on cameras, you know, the sales, the point of sales, it's...I don't...I wouldn't think that people are going to have a great interest in selling other things than what they have there. There's a great deal to be protected by the business owner, you know, a great deal of investment, so I don't think this is one of those things that would make it better.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I have one other concern, and it's not so much with the ordinance, but my concern is an unknown, and that is how much additional time will be needed to be spent by our police force to protect or respond to various things that could happen at these businesses. Not so much when they're open, but when they're closed. We see people driving into jewelry stores and within a few minutes, even with the best security systems around and the best camera systems around, taking off with thousands and thousands of dollars worth of jewelry in just a few minutes and getting away with it, and they can't find them. What can they do with medical marijuana in a facility? That's just a concern I have, and I don't know if anyone has an answer for that.
I think there's a provision in there for security. I think there's a provision in our ordinance for security and in the state regulations, and certainly, you're right, Councilman Selman, I don't know if we...if anybody has the ultimate answer, but I think the steps that the state has taken, the steps that we have taken, are probably the maximum. They're going to hire people to watch their product, I'm sure. And if you can...if you could think of anything that we had forgotten or that the state had forgotten, that, I mean, cameras is already there, those kinds of things, I don't know what else would be a...
Again, I don't know.
Right. That's why I say I don't think any of us know, but we just do the best we can, and I think we've done that pretty well.
We are in uncharted territory. We can do the best that we can, and no battle plan survives first contact with the enemy intact. So we'll see. We will learn, and we will respond accordingly. So, and, you know, I thought your idea for the background check for employees is a good one, but it's you and I on that one. I'll still research it for you, just in case, Councilman.
And I'm not necessarily concerned with somebody sweeping the parking lot. I'm more concerned with somebody working the register and working the counter. Those are the ones that bother me, that working...that would be working with the public directly on that score. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
And again, before you vote on this and before we hear comments from the public, I want to thank Jan Drum for her work on this. Jan, and somewhat Jeff Campbell as well, they did a good job trying to research this issue. They once went to a seminar from the state to educate all of the local municipal attorneys on medical marijuana. They came back and got their money back because there was nothing there to learn. The state has not done a great job with this. That is unfortunately per usual with the state when it comes to regulations. So again, Jan did a good job with this. I want to thank her for her efforts.
Mr. Mayor, ditto what City Manager said.
In fact, I want to thank her for so many things lately. She really has just been fantastic. Thank you, Jan.
Mayor, I'd like to also say that good job, and there's going to be a lot more coming at you. Sorry. But I've done a lot of reading and extensive research, if you haven't...
You have, and I also should have credited you, Councilman, because you...
No, no, that was not what I...my point. My point was that Titus ordinance, state ordinance statutes that I have read is from O.R. Oregon. State of Oregon has probably the best medical marijuana procedures and policies in place. If you look at Colorado, California, Arizona, those have the most liberal and somewhat ambiguous policies there in place. I don't always agree with all of this. I did not...I was not a proponent, and I will probably still not be a proponent of marijuana usage, but I look at the intent and purpose of the medical marijuana process. The intent and purpose is to better make someone's life a little easier to deal with their pain or deal with some situation that may not directly or indirectly affect their family. It is a lot of benefits in different ways, and everybody has a different way of making a use of the medical marijuana. My biggest issue is the smell in the neighborhoods. I can't stand it. But I did a lot of research, did a lot of reading over the time, over the last...and conversations with Councilman LaCuro. We've had several conversations on this topic before, and I think that we've come to a very good conclusion on this over the years of talking about it. Wouldn't you say, Andy?
Yes. Yes, it's been very colorful discussions and...
And we've actually had some...
We've hashed out a lot of things.
Here, too. But we've done quite well, I think, through the whole process here. It's taken, you know, I know Ed's been pushing, you guys have been pushing certain things through, and I, you know, I've been talking to different residents and talking...
Jointly, you did an outstanding job.
Talking...no, no, it's not my point. My point is that I think with all the stuff we've been through with this policy, it's worked out to the best policy that we've come up with. The state statutes are very...
The state statutes are very, here, more ambiguous than so many other states. They don't know what they're doing here. Lansing needs to get their together. But anyways, let's move forward and hear from the public.
Well, I have a few myself.
If the mayor doesn't mind.
Does anybody else have any?
Actually, I do.
Okay, go right ahead.
Thank you all for coming out. This, uh, this, looking out in the audience, this is very important to a lot of you and I just want to share that in talking with neighbors and members of the community, from high school students to the sweet little old eighty-year-old who goes to church every Sunday, something they universally have in common is a family member or loved one that's dealt with cancer and that marijuana has made a difference in their quality of life. In looking over these ordinances, any, any discussion that we're having on this and where I'm coming from is the limits and where they're located and I don't want to see a dispensary on every corner, but I want to make sure that we have marijuana available to patients that need it and that this is done right and that the businesses that are chosen for the licenses are part of our community and extremely responsible to our community. So it, it has, it's touched my life and has made a difference in loved ones that I have. So I thank you all for coming out tonight, heard from a lot of people and the passion in the room tonight is pretty obvious.
Anything else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, I did miss one note that I had made and, and I do have one question on the ordinance and that is, under safety compliance on page one, number three, the first line ends in When we say test, do we mean test for THC content? What do we mean by test?
It's for a myriad of things, it's for a myriad of things under the statute. This definition comes directly from state law.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, I have several actually, so bear with me.
Well, don't let any grass grow under your feet. Ask your questions.
Plural. Don't forget the S.
Questions.
Yes. Uh, let, let me first say, I, I'm not going to make any judgment on the efficacy of marijuana, the good or bad, it's here and so we're dealing with it in the way we deal with it and that's legislatively. We had talked about consolidation of some of the licensing levels, either recommending consolidation or requiring consolidation with some. What does the council feel on that? That's not addressed in this, in this document.
Your Honor, the testing facilities, as I've tried reading through this, this novel from the state, is the testing facility the only one that really does have to be off-site? That and, and the transporters?
Well, I'm not even talking about off-site, I'm just talking about a, a facility that could consolidate. If you could have a grow facility with a processing facility in the same building or if you could have a, um, a processing facility and a, and a...
Provisional.
The provisional, uh, that's the word for dispensary that the, the state is using. And whatever you could consolidate, some of the concerns I've heard and, and probably not justifiably, you know, somebody said, oh my God, there's going to be thirty places to buy marijuana in Hazel Park, that's not the case. What we're talking about here is three places to buy marijuana in Hazel Park. The rest is either a grow facility, a testing facility, a transportation organization or...
Safety.
A safety organization. So it, it's not this proliferation of, of marijuana on every street corner, but if, if there are concerns of numbers and we're concerned about, since we're such a small community, maybe consolidating these things.
I, Mayor, I'd like to maybe make a consideration of merge the processor and provisional together after talking to some other people and reading that that would probably be the best, that they could make the, they could process the different forms at the provisioning center to be sold to the public rather than have it done at the growing facility.
Whatever the appropriate consolidation would be, I'm not...
I've talked to a few people that have, are connected to, in other states, that, to these provisioning centers and that's primarily what they do, they do a lot of that processing at the provisioning center itself.
Well, let me ask the administration, what are your feelings on this? Do we, I mean, we could, can we go, can we mandate, can we suggest, can we give more points or more consideration?
Let us research, that, that may be your best way to go, let us research what other states are doing with this so we can try to have some kind of a, so I can give you a real educated recommendation before second reading.
There, there is one limited area where you can't.
Right, right, I mean, there is, uh, the state regulation that says you can't put this and this.
I'd like to research that with Jan and see if we can get you some more information before we make a recommendation on this. I just, I just, I just don't know enough about this to say.
Okay.
And I don't know if it was, if it was Councilman Webb or, or somebody that brought, was talking about that at one point in time during our work-study sessions, but we also looked at some of these things being in the zoning ordinance too because you haven't yet other than what the state says where things have to go in certain zoning districts.
Yes.
We haven't come to any consensus as to where the other things that were allowed to have leeway on, where you want them to go either. So I thought maybe that's where you guys were leading to on that idea.
That's fine, I have no qualms about where it goes. If it's something that would, would, would help us consolidate and put things in specific areas, if it's more appropriately done...
That may be, I think you've got it right when you said that may be better with the selection criteria, to use it like that, if we could consolidate. We have to, I, I'm just not comfortable giving you any opinion at all about this until I look at it.
Fine, like I said, it's in progress, so if you would look into that.
It is kind of...
Don't know.
The other thing is, just for the general public, we do have, um, testing centers here, already testing.
Already testing.
Medical marijuana and we've had them for some time. So whatever licenses that would be handed out would be based upon their qualifications and what they would be, you know, what they currently do.
Well, but again, your state is, uh, I mean, another thing I just heard on the radio, they're talking about shutting all these places down while they get their licenses to get...
Yeah, your, your state may shut them down even though they've complied with all the rules and they've been an upstanding business and they may end up shutting down the process until the regulations come down.
Right.
It's the state, we know how much we love them.
And some of them are not just doing the medical marijuana, that's just part of their business, they're doing grounds, ground testing and mal allergy testing and other processes as well. So that's only probably forty percent of their business.
Right.
I know this isn't the zoning time now, but I would like to make sure we consider that these businesses, especially a dispensary provisioning center type business, is a, has a possibility of being a real economic development tool and I would like to have a provision for the possibility of having one or two up and down John R. somewhere. As far as the bundling of the licenses, I think it might have a lot to do with the applicant and the availability of properties, whether they, it might make sense to have growing and provision, growing and processing in one location and depending on the size of the properties, retail stores we have available, it might just be a sales place, a provisioning center. But then some of the buildings might also have, where you would do a provisioning and the processing in one place.
And, and some of these buildings unfortunately I think have been hoarded for the purpose of medical marijuana and they're of no chance of licensure and they need to be looking for appropriate other uses for those buildings.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
A question for the administration. City manager is pretty closely connected with the law enforcement in Oakland County and law enforcement in Oakland County was very quick to close the retail medical marijuana operations in Waterford, I believe, and I know, in Ferndale. What do we have in the way of guarantees or, or what have you from...
This is very different because this will be specifically authorized by state statute. What you had there in Ferndale and in Waterford were people operating dispensaries under the caregiver model and those dispensaries were not specifically allowed by state law. I don't think that there is a great likelihood of anybody from Oakland County, the prosecutor's office or the sheriff's department, taking any enforcement action at all on these types of facilities. You could see a change in Washington and policy there, they may attempt to enforce the fact that it's still illegal under federal law, but at this point with all of the recreational marijuana and medical marijuana that's proliferated throughout the other states of the union, I think there would be a huge court test as to whether or not the tortured commerce clause of the constitution has actually been effectively used and is even legal to regulate these drugs on a federal level. So I'm, I'm not worried about anything from Oakland County, it's not going to come from the state or anything like that, if it comes, it will come from the feds. Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, I got one more question.
All right.
Since we're on the topic of growing facilities, processor, security, whatever, the, we have class A, B, and C on the growing facilities, I'd like to have our administration do a, since they're doing all this research.
Thanks.
It's all right, I've done some of myself, but I just want to see what you come up with. How many square feet does an applicant actually need and do we need to spell out the amount of square footage per building, per license? So they're not just cramming, so they're just not cramming plants into a facility that may not be able to handle that many plants and causing a safety and fire hazard?
No, everything has to be done and everything has to be safe, that's all very tightly regulated and there will be a certain number of plants.
Yeah, you've got the watering, you've got the chemicals which has to have separate storage.
It has had totally different stores, yes.
And you've got the, your requiring, of course, the filtration system, so you've got to have room for that. Having never grown a marijuana plant, I have no idea how much room even one takes or, or anything like that.
There, I was actually invited to tour a, an industrial caregiver facility in a neighboring community, I'm going to try to set up that tour for all of you so that you can see what one looks like. It is very much an industrial medical facility, it's not like what you see in somebody's basement. This is very well done, they wear lab coats, they have computer climate control, it's a science, it really is, it's highly technical.
I'd like to go see that, it'd help me...
I want to have you all see it so you can see exactly what you're talking about. In fact, they want to locate a non-growing, a non-marijuana business here in Hazel Park to show off their equipment and their processes. So, again, they were very helpful and I would like you to, to see that.
Okay.
One more thing, Mr. Mayor. Under four point oh four, point oh six, grow facility, grower facility D, it says, "Security and floor plan for indoor storage of chemicals must be provided," page four, page four. So maybe that would be, a similar sentence could be added to that under provisioning center, "Security and floor plan and storage."
Would you like us to amend that, to say that?
Yeah, well, it's, it doesn't sound unreasonable to have a secure place to store a product that's worth so much money on premises.
Okay, what was that addition?
Well, it, just, um, so if you look...
That will be, yeah, what was your? That will be F.
"Security and floor plan for indoor storage must be provided."
D would also be added to the, to the provisioning center as F. That's a good suggestion.
Good.
Well, exactly what is the difference between this and the, the planning commission? I mean, there are a number of things that will come up during the planning commission.
That's going to be specifically related to land use.
Okay, so then that would more appropriately be in this document than...
Yes.
...in a planning commission document. There are a number of, does anybody else have anything? There are a number of areas in here that, that have me a little confused in terms of how this is going to relate to the current situation of caregivers. Is this going to control the caregiver also?
The new statute, and Jan can correct me if I'm wrong, when it takes effect, does give us some ability to regulate the caregiver community.
Because in here, just take for instance, section five, point zero four, point zero six, zero on page four under grow, grower facility, one of the things says, blah, 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 confined to the interior of the building or dwelling from which the odor is generated. Again, there are a number of areas in here that, that make me think that this is somehow encompassing the caregiver that's already going on.
My reading of the frequently asked questions from the state is that this really did not affect the normal patient caregiver relationship. Somebody having twelve plants for their caregiver, or for a caregiver having twelve plants for their patient or a patient having twelve plants for themselves, this would not be affected. This, this whole, the Facilities Licensing Act...
This does not, in and of itself, your ordinance does not, as it's written now, impact the caregiver relationship between the patient.
Well, then I would suggest we remove that, the word dwelling, because it's inappropriate for this document.
It could be, but in there, somewhere further in there, they say that there will be no, you, you cannot have a connection, there should be no door or entry exitway which provides direct access to another type of business residence or living quarters. So living quarters are not allowed.
Cannot have a living quarters.
Can't have a, so what I just read is at the top of page four.
Okay, right.
Exitway which provides...
So that's saying in a building described previously...
I don't know how they're going to deal with those that are already licensed caregivers and their homes. I'm assuming and personally hoping that it goes out of the home and into actual commercial establishments, it's safer, you can regulate it better, you can control the order better, the filtration system. I, I'm not one hundred percent sure what the state's going to do with it at this point. We can do what we want it right now, whether or not the state's going to handcuff us, so to speak, in what we're going to be allowed to do in the end, I don't know. Whatever you guys suggest at this point, let me know.
Yes, sir.
We'll look in it further.
The only thing I'm saying is if this document that we're proposing does not cover the caregiver, then the statement that says that the smell will be confined to the interior of the building or dwelling is inappropriate.
Well, we just kind of wanted to try and control as much as we could the ones that are in the dwelling at this point, but I see your point, what you're, what you're trying to get at, yes.
I mean, I think this is not going to control the caregiver. If we want to control the caregiver, then we have to have another ordinance. Or we have to enforce an ordinance as a public nuisance.
Well, we, and we do that and we do issue notices and we do issue tickets.
Well, then if we do that, then we need to undo this.
I have no problem with that.
No problem. No problem. What is that, where's that at?
Just remove dwelling on page four. Grow Facility A. I mean, it would confuse people. It seems to be giving them permission to.
So, line six.
One, two, three, four, five. Yes. Yes, it is line six. I have a number of.
Strike or dwelling?
I have a number of other things that are, I see as redundancies, or, you know, not substantive, but redundancies that I'll just give to you and won't keep you here for. Again, this is covered by zoning. Just a question. Secure transport facility. Can people transport from other municipalities into our municipality, or?
They can transport anywhere in the state to anywhere in the state, but they can only be located in an opt-in community. Where their base of operations.
Gotcha. And again. There's a portion in here that says they can't consume alcohol in a, or they can't sell alcohol in a.
Provisioning Center.
In a Provisioning Center, which is dispensary.
Right.
Can they sell other things?
This is from state law that specifically excludes it.
It just specifically excludes alcohol?
It says you cannot sell alcohol.
So, they can sell.
I guess they can sell pop. You're going to get munchies.
Can the boil, or something. All right.
Doritos?
Doritos, yeah.
They can even, you know, send in, send out for stuff, I guess.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Does that mean, then, that products made from marijuana derivatives could be sold?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, that's what they sell.
Okay. No, I mean, like candy?
Edibles?
Brownies, et cetera. Creams, whatever.
That's why I added that one section there that you may not.
Sample of my business.
Samples, yes.
Sample the products that they may be selling. It's on the premises. So, that they may be able to go home with their products.
Yes.
But I do want to bring one thing up, Mayor, if you don't mind. Since Jan Drum touched on one part of that, as well as, I think, a couple of council member did, maybe we could look at down the road after we get this maybe off the ground in its infant stage, to do a co-op, to get some of the home growers into a co-op facility to be able to lease space, to better get them out of there, so they wouldn't necessarily, because some of these grow facilities and the homes are tearing up some of the homes, they're not, some people don't know what they're doing. And if they're better at, you know, better in a controlled environment, it would be safer, I think, as well.
I think the whole homegrown thing is going to have to be looked at as the state.
We will bring you some recommendations on that, maybe as soon as the next meeting. I'm not promising. You've given us a lot of research to do, but we will bring you something soon on that one.
Okay. We have held our discussion. I will now open public discussion to the floor. Again, let me remind you that you will be given a minute to say whatever you want about the proposed ordinance. You have it in front of you. If you don't, there are copies up there that you can obtain. So, I'll open public discussion. Is there anyone wishing to speak on the ordinance? Anyone wishing to speak on the ordinance? Step up.
Hi, again, Amy Aubrey, 23051 Powell Avenue. There's some parts of this ordinance that I think are fantastic, and there's some that I don't like, which I can't go over in a minute. My biggest issue with the item today, though, is the lack of community outreach. We basically saw the bare minimum met, where it was placed on the agenda outside the building. Just found out about it. Just received a revised version. This is kind of new territory. So, I just think that there really should be more community outreach before this item moves forward, so that we can be more informed as residents about what's being done. Put some FAQs up, put it on the website. Just really, please, reach out to the community so that we know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
Mayor?
Yes.
May I respond?
You're also public, I guess. Go right ahead.
In response to Ms. Aubrey, this is only our first reading of this ordinance. This will come back to us for a second reading. And then, before anything else can happen, there will have to be a zoning issue resolved in front of the Planning Commission. And then, there will be licensing, and this will all take time. So, before it all comes together, there will be plenty of outreach. However, I agree with you, and I would be interested to know, for example, how the church community, how the school community, how the service club community, and others feel in the community. It would be interesting to know. So, I agree with you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other public discussion? Any other public discussion? Yes. And if you would just state your name and address.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Craig Aronoff. I'm with the Cannabis Legal Group in Royal Oak. I represent people interested in having a license here in your community. First, I want to thank you for your discussion tonight. Having attended a number of different cities and townships, I think you really brought it to the table. It was very intriguing to listen to and the depth of it. Councilman Solomon, you had mentioned background checks for employees. What I want to do is point you to Section 405 of the statute, where it says that before hiring a prospective employee, the holder of a license shall conduct a background check on a prospective employee. So, the state's contemplated that already, and if there is a provision in there, and it actually says if they have a criminal history, they'll have to get permission of the board before that person would be employed by the licensee. So, just so you're aware, that that's built into the statute already.
Thank you.
Secondly, with respect to vertical stacking, the idea of putting multiple licenses in a single property. I think I'm going in and out, sorry. What I would suggest is, is that a grower and a processor are more combined than a processor and a provisioning center. The idea is the wholesale flour that's grown will then be processed by the processing license, and it would be an added cost to the operators to put it on a truck and ship it to the provisioning center.
I've heard it both ways.
Yeah.
Different people.
I understand. I just, pointing it out for some.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Of course. And certainly, before it's ever able to get into the Provisioning Center shelves, it's going to be acknowledged by the transporter. It's going to be inventoried by a third party. So, regardless if it's on site, it's still going to have to be inventoried by a third party. So, just keep that in mind. Thank you all for your conversation. I look forward to seeing where this goes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other public discussion? Any other public discussion? Any other public discussion? Being none, we will close public discussion. Thank you very much. We have the administrative reports, recommendation on the ordinance. We have a motion and a second. Council discussion has been held. Public discussion has been held, and we will call the questions. Is there any further discussion from the council? Being none, roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. The motion carries on first reading, and you have the little amount of work we ask you guys to do, so. We'll expect a report on that tomorrow.
I'm learning a lot.
That brings us to boards and commission appointment.
Mr. Mayor, the administration respectfully requests the appointment of Rob Zograff to the Arts Council.
Mr. Mayor? Yes.
So, move.
Support.
Motion is made and supported. Discussion on the motion? Being none. Dissension to the motion? Being none. Motion carries. New business? Is there any new business to be brought to the floor?
Yes, Your Honor. Under, I don't know if it'd be boards or commissions or new business, but I've had several members of the Plan Commission advise that their terms have expired quite some time ago, and all of them would like the opportunity to continue to serve on the Planning Commission. Five or six of them.
One of the tasks is to get our list of boards and commissions together and to go back, check and see when those individuals were appointed, so we know which terms that we are appointing them to. So, they cannot all be reappointed for a three-year period at the same time, so they will need to be appointed to staggered terms based upon when their date of expiration is. So, that will be a nice project for young James Finkley to undertake at some point. It will not be next week, because he's going to be manning the clerk's office by himself, which is good training for him. And so, after that, I assume probably sometime before the end of September, we should be able to go back and try to do some research and find out when some of these folks were actually appointed, so we can know what set of terms to appoint them to.
Very good. Got the message.
Okay. Good deal.
Okay. Any other new business to be brought to the floor?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we request a report from the administration as to why we don't see the composite historical pictures of previous mayors and city councils on the wall.
Mr. Councilman Solomon, I'd like to present that report to you now. Madam Attorney, Jan Drum.
Yes. During the reconstruction, the court moved the photos many times, and a lot of them got broke. I have been charged with going out and finding new frames. They are very expensive, because we have a lot of photographs, and I'm trying to get the best price possible and to have them all match, so that they look presentable in here. I have gone out numerous occasions. I've already got the judge's frames done. I'm working on your frames now.
Wonderful.
Any clue as to when that might be accomplished?
Soon as I can get enough of them that match, because I went to Michael's and actually I got a really good price. I mean, you're talking about, you know, the big 16 by 20 frames? I'm getting them for like $25 each. I know.
The ones that were hanging up there weren't that.
Oh, no, no, no. Those were cheap. These are really nice. Those cheap ones were $18. The nice wood ones are 25. The court and everybody have been collecting the coupons for me, the discount coupons, to get them, okay? Now, I have to go and order them from different Michaels, because they all don't have enough in one spot. So, I'm all over the state trying to garner enough to make sure I have them all that match. But they're going to be a great price, and they will look fantastic.
Okay.
Just one question. Are you totally shameless, Mr. City Manager? I mean, what do you use a person with a law degree for?
Look, I think it sounded like Jan Drum actually enjoyed that.
Jan Drum is a Swiss Army knife, okay? Let me tell you, I'm serious. I mean, she's not only a legal Swiss Army knife, and I mean this with, I'm not blowing smoke. She is absolutely the most versatile lawyer that I have ever met in terms of her ability to practice different types of law. She has the widest range of legal experience of any lawyer that I've ever met. She does a great job, but she also probably has a slightly better eye than I do or some of the other folks here in terms of what is aesthetically pleasing. I mean, look at the fact that we've got, you literally have six or seven different styles of frames. And our district judge, he's, you know, those of you who know him know, he's just a little bit particular or obsessive compulsive. So, we need to make sure that all of those frames match and that they look good.
You've convinced me.
And Jan Drum is the best to do it.
You've convinced me. I understand it completely now. Good choice.
And you want, I can do it if you choose.
Oh, no. No, no, that's quite all right.
But, and I could, or else I could sign, you know, we can make Jimmy do it. That's our new motto, just make Jimmy do it.
Forget I said anything.
But I think we're better off with Jan doing it, because she has an eye.
Because I'm cheap, and I save you money.
Okay, is there any other new business?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a little bit of new business here. I've dropped on your perusal, an update from Jeff Campbell from the Planning Department. I don't know if Jeff's even got his own update, but he is here. I want to let you and the residents of Hazel Park know that Jeff and I have been busy, and we've had some very exciting meetings with some new potential developers coming to the city of Hazel Park that I'm so excited about, I couldn't sleep after the meeting with the one last week. It was just fantastic. We're meeting with LG tomorrow, but I'll let, I don't want to steal his thunder.
Sorry, I just acquired a cold the last 24 hours. Yeah, so, as you guys are aware, it was publicized after the MEDC granted LGE 2-point-some million dollars for their project. And if you saw, they're developing $25 million into that building to make it fit. It will have, and we've actually seen the plans, it'll have a production line that actually assembles the batteries in their final stage. Basically, they're getting a component, putting it inside another component, and it'll go down a factory line, but there's no assembly of batteries and chemicals that causes anything like that, so that's good. They're only using actually three or four bay doors, which is also a good thing, so they're not creating a ton of truck traffic out of that site as well. And then, there's going to be offices for 25 professionals, engineers. They will also do battery, specific battery repairs at this facility, and I should stop and say, the batteries are for the electronic Chevy bolt that will be coming forth in the future, which is just great. I mean, this is new economy kind of stuff that is incredible.
This is new economy, green economy, economy of the future. This is Hazel Park.
And on top of that, we're getting engineers in there that will be working. They're going to have offices. There's going to be several conference rooms. It is an exciting project, and 25 million, let's not forget some, a lot of that money will go to our permits for the Building Department as well. Thank you very much. So, that is all good news. Also, as you guys know, that came out about a month ago, is Amazon is going to go in there as well. They're, they originally asked for a smaller space, but expanded the scope of the space and the lease period as well. So, we're looking at probably, this is general estimates based on who we've talked to, we're looking at three shifts at 60 people per shift. It's the, or, so basically, it's going to be, that seems wrong. That seems wrong. I think I'm underestimating there.
Underestimated it, yeah. Okay.
So, it actually came out to 360, so it's, what is that, divided by three? 120 per shift. That's what it is. I cut it in half for whatever reason, but it's 120 per shift, and it's 360 jobs with Amazon, and that's just a projection, just to be sure. And I forgot to mention, LG is going to be about a total of 125 jobs. 25 of those will be the engineering folks, and then the 50 will be the people working on the production line, doing the warehousing and all those things. It's not going to be a huge warehousing facility.
There'll be two shifts of 50.
Yeah, two shifts of 50, so it's 125 jobs. And you guys might have seen it, but the CVS on Nine Mile is going to be Oak Street Medical Center. It's a for-profit, no tax exemption, where they serve the Medicare population. They're out of Chicago. They have one in South Gate. They've already made themselves involved in the community, I believe, at a couple of meetings, and I think they'll be a valuable community member, but that's a space that's plagued us for numerous, numerous years. We've got exciting potential new developments. I'm not going to go too much into those, but they're really, to say they're game-changing doesn't really do them justice.
We're really going to work hard to bring them.
Let's not talk about it yet.
Yeah, so, but they're going to be at the CVS on Jenner, and possibly, maybe, they're both on Jenner, let's just put it that way. I also want to talk about, we are going to be working with the Planning Commission and meeting individually with each Planning Commission member, each ZBA member and DDA members as well, to discuss master plan. to discuss master plan, and we're gonna get to drafting it, uh, this year. And hopefully we'll have it done by the end of the calendar year, uh, but the idea is, Jan, thank you.
No, we're gonna begin the process.
Well, no, I mean, that's ambitious, but...
We get it done in April.
Yeah, so basically, we're, the drafting process is gonna start, and I'll be coming back to each board with drafts of each process we finish, they'll be done in chunks, you know, based on what's out there. Um, and also, I did want to point out, um, from last year, we had gotten fifty thousand dollars from the Michigan Land Bank to demo, uh, six houses. Those houses were demolished, um, including, and Jan knows this as well as anybody through the MSP stuff, some of the owner's requirements that go along with taking the grants and demoing the houses. But, uh, we received the money, so that money has gone back into the general fund, and will help, uh, with last year's demolitions, and hopefully we have a little more for this year's, but we'll see. And then, uh, I also wanted to mention, Joe Barr is going to have an Oktoberfest at the end of September. So they're gonna set up something and do a little Oktoberfest festival, uh, to create some additional buzz for Joe Barr and the burgeoning, uh, restaurant community on John R.
Jeff, while I'm thinking about it, I did get approached by a couple of Arts Council members, and they were interested if, you know, Joe Barr might want to pair with them and talk about a possible Arttober cooperation. I don't know how that's...
Joe and Carrie are usually amenable to pretty much anything, so, uh, we will reach out to them and put them in touch with you guys.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sorry, my nose is burning, I gotta sit down.
Any other new business to be brought to the floor?
Uh, I also have a land cure update for you that I will put in your boxes in the interest of brevity. I will actually just leave them with you as you, uh, you can take them with you as you leave. Uh, Jan has an update for you on, uh, building and code enforcement stuff in addition to what Jeff has. I don't know if she wants to give it tonight, because she's been up probably since five o'clock this morning, but, uh, we also have some updates for you on that front as well.
Are they, are they written updates? If you could just give us copies of the written updates, it'd be fine.
Mayor, uh, also, we have Woodward Heights Road Reconstruction going.
Woodward Heights Road Reconstruction.
Just the one section.
From, uh, northbound I-75 to Batel. Again, this is partially funded by a grant from Oakland County. I want to thank Elaine Zach, uh, and the Oakland County Commissioners for actually, the county has given us a money.
A little bit.
Not road commission money, they've actually given us some money to do something with our roads, and I think that's fantastic. The plan is each year to do a, another section until we get all the way to Dequender.
And with that, uh, have we got any numbers together from...
We have not received anything from the engineers, as soon as I get the package back from the engineers.
I saw them out there testing, drilling out there.
Yep, as soon as I get that information, we will have a study session.
You plan on putting a package of road repairs together for the future? That we need to get back to saving what roads we have, the newer ones in, as well as updating maybe the south end of John R., so we can actually drive down it without falling off of it. Thanks.
Did I hear you correctly, Ed, uh, from I-75 northbound to Batel?
To Batel.
I thought it had only was going to John R. before.
We're doing two years worth now, we're catching up.
Good, good, way to go.
We've got two years to do. So again, a lot of incredibly good things going on in Hazel Park. And like I said, I'm, I'm very proud of my team, and I'm very proud of what we have accomplished. Tomorrow, Jeff and I are meeting with the folks from LG, and I'm gonna ask them about what their application process is going to be for jobs, I keep hearing, uh, I keep looking on Facebook, but, but how do we apply for these jobs? It's important to remember, these places are not built out yet, okay? LG just signed the paperwork and just got the final approval for their funding from the Michigan Strategic Fund, I think it was last week. So, it's still in process. Right now, the jobs that are being created are jobs that involve the construction of the facility within Tri-County Commerce Center. Amazon is not open yet either, they're still constructing their facility in there. So we're gonna try to touch base with both of those folks. One of the things that we promised was, they asked us what we could do to help, and we said, well, we will hold an employment fair for you. So our whole point is to give Hazel Park residents the best chance that we can give them to get these jobs. In the meantime, if you're interested in working here, start working on your resume. I'm gonna try to bring in somebody from Michigan Works to do a little talk for Hazel Park residents, to talk to them about how to put together a resume, and what they need to do to make themselves more, uh, attractive to potential employers.
That might be one of the things we can talk to the library about at staff meeting tomorrow.
Sure, absolutely, and we can have them host it there. So we can get Michigan Works that be willing to do this, and we can invite people and try to give them the best chance that we can give them to get these positions. We can't make them hire people from Hazel Park. We can strongly suggest that they be given the first priority, and we will certainly ask for that tomorrow. I think we've got a lot of people here who would be great applicants, but it's incumbent upon them, themselves, to try to make them as attractive applicants as they can be. And posting dumb and nasty comments on Facebook about potential future employers is not a wise thing to do. I don't know about anybody else, but before I hire somebody, you know what I do, I Google them. Okay? So again, be careful what you post in social media, because it lives forever.
Do you have any idea when it will be that they'll at least have the classifications of jobs?
I do not.
Okay.
We're, this is, we're meeting with LG, we're actually meeting with their executive vice president tomorrow.
Yes, uh, they have an office in Troy, uh, currently, so we're meeting with their executive vice president. They're slated, assuming construction goes to, to, uh, R., or, you know, there's no major delays. They're looking at February first, is what was indicated.
I'm, I'm thinking about just, you know, are there gonna be, uh, production line, uh...
There is actually going to be a significant production facility there. We've actually seen it, we've sat in there, we see how it's gonna go, it's gonna be very extensive. This is a really cool...
Good.
Company that we've landed here, the lock potential opportunity.
And you'll, you'll put that on the Facebook, City Facebook, Facebook page, as well as the city site? When you have the library set up for training and stuff?
As soon as we get either the library, or the high school, or the rec center, wherever we...
I just want to make sure it got on there, that's all.
Decide to do it, absolutely, that's the whole point.
Don't want to leave nobody out.
Is to get as many people prepared as we can to apply for these jobs.
Yeah, and we'll make a huge deal with the job fair, 'cause what's the point of the job fair if we don't publicize it?
That's the whole point of the job fair.
Okay, any other new business?
No.
Any other new business?
Uh, I just want to point out, this... Did you? I'm sorry, I think Council, go ahead. I'm sorry. No, I just want to point out that this, for everybody, this is what the democratic process looks like. This is the town meeting, this is the notification, this is, it actually was on the city's website, it wasn't in a particularly great place, but the proposed ordinance was on the city's website. And the agenda was on, we started putting the agendas on, you know, last month. So they're on there. Uh, we'll post this one as well with the revisions in it. If you want to comment, you can comment, you can show up here, you can speak to the city council, you can call a councilperson individually, you can Facebook them, you can call me, you can... There's a million different ways for you to participate and share your thoughts on this particular ordinance or any other city business. Uh, I'm proud of my bosses tonight for doing a good job with this ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Uh, not on the agenda is comments from the council, so I can go over that, but if anybody has an urge to say anything?
Mr. Mayor, I just have one thing I'd like to let you guys know, which is, um, Lynn Cup has, is been hired full-time to the Building Department now. Uh, her and Candy, I have retrained to go over the nuisance per se hearings. The process has, has been updated, should be quicker, easier for you, clearer for everybody. Uh, they will be coming to some council meetings so they can see what you guys like, what you need, so that they'll have that ready for you in advance. So we hope that these revisions that I've made in the Building and Code Department will help streamline the process, get things done faster, easier, and move things along.
Again, I really want to thank Jan Drum for everything that she's done the past month and a half. She's been an all-star.
If you have any criticisms, it's Pam's.
It's all, it is all Pam Patterson's fault, and you may, uh...
After all this, I'd watch out tomorrow, he's probably got other things for you to do.
Well, there's some more frames that need to be.
There isn't anybody in City Hall that doesn't have numerous jobs.
That's true, and, and again, we, uh, one more thing. Uh, Jeff Campbell and I had a chance to participate in a meeting today in Lansing, uh, with the Michigan Municipal League, the head of the Small Business Association of Michigan, who all of a sudden gets it that there's a problem with municipal finance. Uh, we had folks from Dan Gilbert's organization, we had folks from all kinds of different, uh, business and development organizations there, as well as the university community, the Michigan Townships Association, uh, Michigan Association of Counties, and again, we were invited to be part of a very select group to attempt to get the Mott Foundation to fund a public education campaign, to tell everybody in the state how Michigan's system of municipal finance is fundamentally broken. Thank you all very much.
Gonna get that in there. Okay, uh, being, uh, that we are finished with, uh...
Mr. Mayor?
Our agenda, yes.
Also proud of the, the residents, too. Oh, I'm, I'm on a roll.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move for adjournment.
Motion's been made and supported, dissension being none, we're adjourned.